Folks, let's go ahead and begin. We're starting about a minute late. Forgive us for that. And we'll begin with the roll call. And we will note that all board members are present with the exception of Mr. Lee and Mr. Renner. And John, you and I didn't talk about this, but one of the things I thought would be a good thing to do is that during this roll call is that you may want to introduce someone just so people know what's going on over at the administration table.
We have a new member of our executive team. Our chief equity and diversity officer started with us last week. So welcome, Ivania Garcia Pousatari. I'll say it for her because she doesn't have to. She's stepping out about 45 minutes in to get to another community event. So we'll see you next time after you sneak in.
Welcome.
Good to have you.
Thank you. Stephen?
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we are joined by two siblings from Harrison Elementary School, Gabe and Cohen Bates. Would you young men come forward, please? If you want to stand right here and look forward, okay? And I'm going to talk about you for just a second. You can look right over here, okay?
Hi, guys.
So Gabe and Cohen, they demonstrate the traits of Harrison Husky pride. Each of them shows positivity, respect, integrity, dependability, and effort every single day. So their sister Willow is in fourth grade. She isn't able to be with us tonight. But Gabe is a second grader and Cohen is in kindergarten. Their positivity shows through their smiles and their warm greetings for staff and fellow students. And I have these words from their principal, Dr. Holt. So Gabe is the ultimate greeter and his excitement for learning is evident in his smile. Each of the Bates children display respect for staff and peers. Anytime an adult is talking or teaching, these students focus their full attention on the speaker. They make eye contact and they address them with sir or ma'am. Integrity is shown by making great choices even when the students may think no one is watching. And what is even more admirable is their ability to take ownership for their actions. Willow, Gabe, and Cohen show dependability, completing all tasks ahead of deadline, having attendance above 95 percent. Their sister had perfect attendance during her second grade year. Their principal, Mr. Josh Holt, consistently observes these students making choices to be leaders. One example, multiple times already this year, Mr. Holt has noticed Cohen demonstrating expected norms in the hallway even while his fellow kindergarten classmates are still learning how to walk quietly and show respect for other learners. So well done, Cohen. Obviously, these are outstanding students and we want their parents and any members of the Harrison family to stand so that we can acknowledge all that they do for these young students. So Gabe and Cohen, whenever you're ready, the flag is right over here and you can start with the pledge, okay?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome job, guys.
Well done.
Great job.
Incredible faces.
And they were saying they smiled all the time and they were eating their smiles, trying not to smile. So cute.
Did you tell them they don't have to stick around for the whole...
Absolutely. You're welcome to stick around or leave whenever you need to. So we thank you for being here very much. We are excited to celebrate our first Power of One Hero recognition for this school year. So last week, we kicked off this year's recognition focus at our senior leadership team meeting. And we encouraged our leaders to recognize individuals within our system who are using their superpowers as SPS heroes to make a difference in the lives of others. We have asked our leaders to look for engaging ways to surprise team members and present this special recognition. One of the ways we will highlight the contributions of others is through a monthly presentation at our school board meeting. And here is our September Power of One story.
If I had a superpower, it would be to help everybody.
Our playground, it was like two, like 1950's slides and the little climbing dome, probably from the 70's. And so we started with a committee and we did a penny drive and just did a lot of different efforts to try to raise money. And then in about February, Sylvia came forward and she just came to school one day with $120 and she said, "This is for the playground."
I had saved up a lot of money that I didn't really use that much, so I decided to use it on the playground.
Kids need that little brain break, that time where they just go outside and they run and play, they exercise those muscles. But our playground that we had just didn't have a lot of options for kids to do. And this is not only a playground for our school, but the gates are open after school and in the weekend. And so it's a playground for this whole neighborhood and it is an amazing playground.
All school year, I talk to my kids about being bucket fillers. And so we're always talking about ways of how we can fill other people's buckets up, what we can do for others. And so Sylvia is one who is always willing and always trying to do that in some way or the other. And so I think this was just very fitting for her and her personality that she would want to donate her entire life savings.
Here at Weller, we focus on pride behavior. And P is polite, R is respect, I is integrity, D is disciplined, E is effort. And Sylvia really showed pride behavior when she sacrificially gave like that. And so thank you Sylvia for what you have done to inspire us to make this playground
So we are so pleased that Sylvia is here with us tonight. Sylvia, would you please come forward?
Thank you.
Her family's here, too.
So Sylvia is one example of the many Power of One heroes that we'll be introducing and sharing throughout the year. So continue to watch for Power of One SPS on social media as we celebrate more and more of our heroes within our system.
Stephen, I hate to interrupt, but could we see Sylvia's family?
We need a little more Sylvia celebration.
Yes, you all would like to stand, please. We'd like to celebrate all that you've done to raise such a remarkable young lady. So we will move forward with our community partner recognition this evening and we have much to celebrate tonight. Many of our partners are performing heroic work as well. And tonight, we honor a group of partners who helped to make back-to-school a success for 7,182 of our under-resourced students. Ready-Set Supply is a coordinated effort to collect school supplies. This systematic approach makes sure that students get what they need when they need it. Working together, their efforts resulted in serving nearly 400 more students this year than last year. On behalf of our students and their families, we would like to say thank you to the partners who helped coordinate the Ready-Set Supply initiative and recruited support from throughout the community to meet their goal. Our partners include Victory Mission, James River Assembly, The Salvation Army, Freshwater Church, Northside Christian Church, and Central Assembly Church. Janelle Reed from Victory Mission and Josh Longenecker from James River Assembly are both here this evening. Would you please come forward? Would you like to share anything with the board?
Yeah, sure, of course. Victory Mission is just honored to be able to come beside Springfield Public Schools. You know, we used to do big back-to-school bashes, but being able to do this impacts so many more families. And so we love being able to do this and hope that we can continue doing this. So thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say to the board, thank you so much for working with us on this. It was several years ago Marty Moore and several of us sat around a table and thought, said, "How could we do what we're doing but make it better so that more students can be impacted?" And your team launched a massive effort to coordinate people from around the community and then also went out of your way to support organizations like Victory Mission and James River Church, which have certain ways of doing things. And so it was super helpful and the result speaks for itself. More students are ever being helped, more organizations are ever jumping in, and I think the best is yet to come. So we're excited to be a part of it. Thank you so much for all your work you do to educate our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can't do it without you.
That's right.
And that concludes our honoring excellence for the evening.
Thank you. Thank you, Stephen.
We need to let Sylvia know she can go home, too.
Yeah.
Jill's really bothered.
Stay as long as you like, but this is a good time.
Go have some ice cream, Sylvia.
Next on our agenda is to approve the agenda. And the recommended action is that the board approve the agenda as presented. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you. Lena, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Charles, any discussion? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. The next item is public comments to address agenda items. These are for agenda items. And while we do have some speakers, all of them are non-agenda, so there are none for the agenda. We'll move on to the next item. The next item is the consent agenda. And hold on a second, let me bring that up. The consent agenda consists of agenda items 3.01 through 5.01. And the recommended action is that the board approve the consent agenda items 3.01 through 5.01. Hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Charles. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jill. Any discussion on the motion? Are we ready to vote? The ayes have it and the consent agenda is approved. The next item is the treasurer's report. And we welcome back Carol Embry. Welcome back. It's good to have you.
Yes, thank you. I am back. That's all right. I've been out for a few weeks helping my mother. This evening, our treasurer's report is our standard fare for the month of September. So we know our fiscal year ended June 30. We continue to work to close out the prior fiscal year. And also, our teams, human resources, payroll, and the business services teams, they are all working toward that first large payroll of the year, or the September payroll, where all staffs will be paid. And our audit work is scheduled and will be upcoming in the next few weeks again to close out the year. So for this evening, we have our standard reports that do include a budget amendment and the revenue is relative to the tax levy that was set during the August meeting. And also, we have just a few adjustments on the expenditure budget at this time, under $19,000 for the expenditure budgets. Our fund balance percentage continues to be steady and strong, and that is a change from 17.7% to 17.95%. We do have our bond fund report included for your review. And if I didn't highlight it before, we have added another category and separated some things out. So we'll continue to tweak this and get it to the point where it provides all the information that you need at your fingertips. The categories dividing it include design costs, construction, equipment, land, and contingency. And as you note, each project by site is listed specifically with the grand total summary for the financial file. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any comments or questions for Carol? I did look at the bond project format. Terrific.
There we go. Very good.
Gives me everything I need, at least. So many thanks to the folks who put that together. If there's nothing else for Carol, the recommended action is that the board approves the treasurer's report as presented. Hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Charles. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jill. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? The ayes have it. The next two items on the agenda are information items. And the first one is a Foundation for Public Schools update. And Natalie Murdock, the executive director of the Foundation for Springfield Public Schools, is going to share information on the foundation's funding, back-to-school grants awarded, and pickup project. And I understand today was a big day.
It's Grant Day. It was a big day. And so in my effort to leave no one out, because Dr. Jungman and Jill were able to make a check presentation, but we are here to re-present the check to the entire group because we appreciate you all so much. So I don't know if we want to get a check out.
On behalf of the board, let them do it.
You want us to all come up? Okay.
Yeah, I like that much better.
So yes, I've awkwardly carried that check around all day, just waiting to give it to you guys. But really, it is an exciting day for the foundation. And I really just want to start by thanking you and Dr. Jungman and the incredible SPS staff for your willingness to support the foundation and to work with us to make these opportunities possible. So thank you for that. I also have with me our foundation staff. So Pamela Anderson, who's our director of development, and Tina Pham, who's our admin and program coordinator. They are an amazing team and make all of this happen. So it doesn't come without a lot of hard work. Today, we sent 45 volunteers throughout the district to deliver over $213,000, which will provide a variety of support in several categories to 42 different sites across the district. It has been fun to see the photos come in all day. So if you haven't checked out social media, be sure to do that and enjoy all of the smiling faces, not only of our volunteers, but of the grant recipients as well. So while Grant Day is our big kickoff for the year, it's really just the tip of the iceberg. So just to fill you in on last year, we awarded over $800,000 to Springfield Public Schools through not only the endowment funds and the scholarship funds that we manage, but hundreds of designated gifts that come in to support our schools every day. And that's over $17 million since our inception that we've put back into the district. Today, we're managing over $5 million that will provide long-term support for future needs of students and teachers. So we're really excited about that. Next month, we will kick off our pickup project program, which is another grant opportunity, a crowdfunding opportunity for our teachers to submit on our website and give the community an opportunity to donate to that. A couple of new things that we've done this year that I want to mention to you. Our Lunch and Learn series was a brand-new event that we did. We did three of them this year. We have four scheduled for 2020. So we're really excited about that opportunity and to really make it grow as an opportunity to just share the exciting projects and programs happening in Springfield Public Schools with our donors, our community partners, and anyone that might be interested. So we're really excited for those. Our next event is on October 8th, so that will highlight the special education services in Springfield Public Schools. So we're really excited to learn more about those programs. And then we also held our very first 24-hour Giving Day called Give Back to School Day. It was on September 17th, the first time that we've done it, but we will definitely do it again. We raised just shy of $10,000 that supported our back-to-school grants. So it was really excited, a lot of brand-new donors, some fairly large donors that stepped up to the plate to support their schools. And we're really excited to do that next year and think that that's just a great way to give our community a chance to give back to their schools. So we're really excited for the upcoming year and appreciate all that you do and your support of the foundation. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions or comments for Natalie?
Since we just had a recent luncheon at your office that you hosted and we were able to dialogue and hear about the amazing projects that are going and all the hard work that you all do and your board and your volunteers, so because we just had that, I don't feel like I have any specific questions. It's always good to see you and your organization.
Well, we appreciate you guys very much.
Well, we appreciate what you all do. And you do go that extra mile so that we can go the extra mile. So thank you.
Today was Christmas Day for teachers and staff. Yeah, it really was. I wanted to say that it was fun to be there to see the people excited to deliver the checks. But then, in keeping with what I always say, you need to send those ladies home. They've had a very long day.
We have had a long day.
You have, you have. Nice work.
Thanks again. Thank you. The second report is also for administration, information, excuse me. And this is a report, actually an update regarding program improvements and expansion opportunities of district choice programs. And we welcome them to the stage.
Hi.
Hi. Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. I'll be joining Kelsey Bravo, our coordinator of choice programs, as we kind of walk you through where we've been with our choice programs, some work that's happened in the recent past, and some really exciting opportunities that are before us. The last time we talked about our choice programs was at a board retreat, I believe it was April of 2018 at the Discovery Center. It was just about as hot as it was today at the Discovery Center.
It may have been hotter.
It may have been. And as just a quick refresher, you know, we kind of focused on three areas during that report. We took a little bit of time to celebrate some of the successes that we've had, the blue ribbons that the community-focused report have identified with our choice programs, high satisfaction levels, high demand. We talked about connections, choice being a part of our strategic plan, and the great alignment that we have with our vision and mission and most of the partners that we are able to connect with and how we can support one another. And then we also took some time to talk about opportunities for improvement. Those were around having a clear definition, being able to really discern what is a choice program and what is a different type of program, ensuring that we have a way to measure quality and continue to improve, equity of access for those programs, and just general awareness. And so just to kind of dig into that a little bit more, when we met before, we really didn't have a strong strategic approach for providing programming to our underrepresented students. So that was a real focus for us. We'd started some of that work and we continued that work and we're excited to bring you an update there. Again, we didn't have a strong definition or a definition at all, so it was really hard to decide what is or is not a choice program. You might remember, we provided a slide similar to this. These were all the programs that were present on our choice website at that time. And as we looked through those, some of those were obviously probably in the wrong spot. And so we really had to come up with a definition. We engaged with a large stakeholder group of teachers and patrons, et cetera, to kind of flesh all this out. And we're excited to share with you where we are now with that definition. Accountability was lacking for the programs that were not evaluated by an outside source. So we have several programs that we have developed and we really didn't have a strong accountability or quality assurance system that we could go in and help those programs continue to grow, capitalize on what was working well, and then improve in the areas that we need to grow. And then really, the gist of the entire retreat was just around that debate that continues today around charter school expansion and school choice nationally, knowing that we need to be ahead of that and what do we need to do to be able to expand our footprint and continue to improve. So that's a little bit of a refresher of where we were when we had that board retreat. So I'm excited now to introduce Kelsey Bravo, who came onboard in this department just a couple of months after that retreat. And we were able to dig in and really do some work to try to address these opportunities. So with that, I'll bring up Kelsey.
Well, thank you, Dr. Hackenworth, for the introduction. So just as he was saying, my name is Kelsey Bravo. I am the coordinator of choice programs and student experiences for our district. I'm entering the second year in my role and I am thrilled to be able to have the opportunity to show you the work that we've been doing this last year and some potential opportunities for our coming years. So we have to be able to have a clear definition of what we define choice programs within our district before we can move any further in this evening. So that choice transfer steering team that Dr. Hackenworth was referencing just a moment ago really had two charges, the first of which was to help us create this definition. And then the second charge was to help us with that accountability piece that he was referencing. So we define choice programs within our district as programs that have focused themes and align curriculum, which provides students access to unique learning opportunities driven by their passion, inquiry, and community connection. So that definition really helped guide the work to get the ball rolling within choice programs. So utilizing that definition, we were able to, I was able to collaborate with, we don't have a clicker there. I was able to collaborate with those program leaders that were listed on the previous slide. So we had 20-plus programs that were identified as choice programs. And so using that definition, we were able to whittle it down to an overall of seven programs. We have six homegrown SPS programs, and then we have our international baccalaureate program. So under that whole umbrella of choice programming, we have three sort of categories that help us to identify the operations of those programs. So we have our magnet schools that do not know any attendance boundaries, they're housed in a non-traditional school setting. And then three of the four of those magnet schools utilize a random lottery for their student enrollment. And then our OTC Middle College, they utilize a different selection process for their student enrollment. Then we have our programs within a school. So this is taking place in Parkview High School and Kickapoo High School as well. So we have Kickapoo U and Parkview Leadership School. And we'll dive into those just a little bit further in this presentation. But being able to have our arms around where our homegrown programs are was a great first step. And then we have our primary years program, our middle years program, and our diploma program. So having that knowledge, we've been able to move forward in some accountability pieces and that other opportunity of some equitable access. So we're going to talk specifically this evening with a couple of strategies around creating some more equitable access points for our underrepresented and our under-resourced student population. The first strategy I would like for us to become refamiliar with is making the enrollment of our magnet schools representative of our elementary and middle school student-free and reduced lunch population. So that was a great step. We haven't totally arrived at where we would like for that to be, but definitely taking steps in the right direction to provide more opportunities to those students.
Kelsey, are we allowed to ask questions or do we just pay attention?
Of course, yeah. Yeah.
I asked permission. So to me, like, one of the major roadblocks for that is transportation. Are you going to talk to us about that?
Yes.
I will stay tuned.
Perfect. Sounds good. Yes, it absolutely is a barrier to many of our families. So the second strategy we're going to touch base about on the equitable access portion is a commitment to equity indicator within our evaluation system. So this next slide, we're going to dive into what the evaluation system looks like a little bit more for our choice programs. But there is a commitment to equity portion that's specific to that evaluation. So each of our program leaders have been given the charge to have an intentional strategic approach to marketing and educating our students to help us create a more diverse opportunity for them.
Question, just a couple things. Work to make enrollment of magnet schools representative. So I've got two questions to that statement. So you're talking about enrollment, which is different than placement or acceptance?
So that would be the acceptance. That would be our class list for our Wolf Academy.
So you're not just talking about application, you're talking about final enrollment?
Yes, yeah.
And then, and so are you saying you want the proportions to mirror what the, so if there's, so you're talking about averages?
Yes. So what our elementary district free and reduced lunch population is, we want that to mirror in our magnet schools. What we were finding were our more affluent parents were applying at a much higher rate than our free and reduced lunch population, just diminishing the chances really of them to be able to get into those programs. So taking this step has been a great approach to solving that.
I don't want to knock us off course because this is a really important question for me, but the list of... me, but the list of choice programs that you've defined, right, that you've narrowed, what happened to the others that were on that list? Where do they live now?
So they, they live within their own communities there. So we were just able to find a better fit for them and, I mean, the program leaders were, it was done in collaboration. So we were able to take that definition, we had some open conversations and decided if it was a good fit or maybe it just wasn't the right.
Effectively, they just were not, they're not on the choice.
Exactly, yeah. They're just not on the choice webpage anymore. Yeah, that's a good question. We didn't, we didn't kick them out of any.
Loaded off the island.
All right, so shifting into that accountability system, so the Choice Transfer Steering Team had helped to create the evaluation process. So when we evaluate a program, we are looking for three big overarching themes which our endorsement process will cover. And so that is program design, that seems like mission and vision, the rationale for the program, and then we have an academic success portion of our evaluation and that's focused on authentic projects, aligned curriculum and a student-centered approach. And then the final category that we are evaluating programs on are community connection. So community connections, we want our choice programs to have a broad impact. We want them to be impacting not only the students that are involved, but the Springfield community and their school community as well. When our, our programs go through an evaluation, it is on a three-year cycle, so you'll be able to see where our current programs fall within that cycle and when their next evaluations would be coming. When a program is not being evaluated, they're going through some support years and some mentor years, so that way they can be able to have some good guidance on the feedback and what transpired from their evaluation. So we were able to identify our programs, we had a much better grasp of what is happening in the realm of choice programs and so now we can begin to start taking the steps to measure the impact of such programs. So we're going to transition into identifying each program and the impact that we're starting with here. So we're going to start with our programs within a school. We have Parkview Leadership School. Parkview Leadership School is, has a current enrollment of 565 students. So with Parkview Leadership School, every single freshman is exposed to Leadership 101. As they progress throughout their time at Parkview Leadership School, they have the opportunity to continue in the leadership track or they can choose not to. So that's the beauty of a choice program is if it's a good fit or maybe it's not. So Parkview has invested in their leadership program and it's really incredible what these students are working on through their capstone projects and through their coursework. So last year they were able to graduate 14 Parkview Leadership graduates. And then we have Kickapoo U, our second program within a school. So Kickapoo U is a college and career readiness program with a focus on job internships, shadows and some community service as well. There are 518 students that are currently enrolled in Kickapoo U and last year they graduated 58 students from Kickapoo U. So one thing that I think is a huge celebration of Parkview Leadership School and Kickapoo U is their connection with our local universities and even pushing, pushing out beyond our geographic area of being able to really communicate the rigor of their programs. And so when a student graduates with that diploma, it's definitely something to be proud of. So we're going to transition into our whole school programming, our international baccalaureate program. This is something we are familiar with. Our Springfield Public Schools students have the opportunity to participate in IB from kindergarten all the way into seniors. They can choose to continue or to, or to not continue. Our primary years program over here, we have transfer numbers for reference. So our primary years program schools, in comparison to the other 36 elementary schools, they are definitely on the high side of our transfer rates. While they're not completely closed to transfer, many of the grade levels within those elementary schools are, are closed to transfer. So we can infer that would be from the programming that IB offers us here. Middle years program and diploma numbers are up there as well for reference. So then we're going to transition into our magnet schools. So we have OTC Middle College, which serves high school juniors and seniors who want to complete their high school diploma and they can explore multiple career and technical pathways. They are currently at an enrollment of 150 students and last year graduated 78 students. So they had some great celebrations there.
Just a quick clarification on that previous slide. You're counting transfers, but there could be some, they already go to that school to begin with?
Absolutely. So these are just students that have transferred in and that live outside of that boundary area.
Good question.
So the next three magnet schools, we are going to be diving into them just a little bit further. We have some potential expansion and new program opportunities that most closely resemble these programs. So I'd like to show you the steps that we are taking to be able to measure our impact in some achievement areas there. So Wolf is our oldest magnet school. We're entering our 12th year with Wolf and it is a conservation and environmental themed program. It's in partnership with Wonders of Wildlife and Bass Pro Shops. And 46 fifth graders get to spend their entire year immersed in conservation and some really sweaty activities. I witnessed it today. So I would like for you to check out our shaded portion of our student demographics. So this is our current class makeup and our past four years of our, our class makeup for our Wolf program. So when we were referencing the more equitable access, we were talking about making the enrollment more representative of our student population. So on the left-hand side, you can see in 2016, we had a full pay lunch population. So our full pay students had a representation of 77% of our class. So as we are moving through this chart and we end up over here in 2020, we now have 59% of our students at a free and reduced lunch rate population.
Remind me when you started the work you're doing?
So that is a great question. That was around 2017 that we had started making that shift. So continuing, you know, again, just taking steps in the right direction.
Are you kidding? I think we did all that more than steps. I would have doubted we could have moved that quickly.
It's, it's a great, great celebration and my own personal opinion, I am thrilled and I absolutely take great pride in providing opportunities to students that they wouldn't get elsewhere.
So are you going to tell us some things you've done to make that significant?
So we, we are able, through our lottery, to be able to identify those students and we can control within our lottery. It's still a random lottery, but we do, we do have our segments out of our full pay students and.
Okay, but that explains how you decided who to let in. I guess from my perspective, I'm more interested in what you did to make it seem normal to apply in the first place. Does that make sense? Or do you think that wasn't as big of the issue?
From my perspective culturally, there were norms among affluent and very competitive parents. We got a claw to get to that and maybe not so much in other, other homes. So to me, the issue was more normalizing it in many different homes in the district, but I feel like you're focusing more on being more deliberate about who we chose to let in.
I think we, like.
Sure, that sounds good.
I read where you're going. So there was enough applications always to have free and reduced represented at this level because we have six applications for every one seat. That number of applications was small though, but when you're only filling 46 seats, right, there was enough in the pool. So what we did is we changed our lottery process to control and ensure that representation at the free and reduced level. So you were getting at, what did we do to get more applicants?
Okay. Well, and the other thing is I'm analyzing all of them and we're talking about Wolf right now and I need to be thoughtful about that. Yes, so it's the deliberate, it's being deliberate about how you decide who to.
We modified our lottery approach to ensure that students from free and reduced backgrounds had access at the same representation level as our free and reduced rate for elementary schools.
So, so you know, in my line of work, he objected to the form of my question.
Redirected.
In education speak.
There you go.
But I'm with you now.
That help?
Yeah.
Can we ask another demographic?
Of course, yeah.
So I just wondering, any thoughts on why we had no black or Hispanic students this year? And I know that all goes back to choice and their interest.
Yes.
But it looks like we had some last couple of years focused.
So we do not currently control for race within our lottery. We're only controlling.
But I'm just thinking of student interest.
That's a great question and it's definitely, again, referencing back, we haven't totally arrived and so it's continuing to take that strategic approach and educating our families on the options that are available to them.
Do you know, and you may get to this as you get through the rest of the choice programs, but I, I think free and reduced lunch, that's one important way to cut the data, so kudos on that. How many schools are represented? How many, I'm going to use the language of home schools are represented here. Has that number broadened sort of ge, so it's a geographical?
That's a great question and so we do see a great representation of applicants across the city. One of our marketing approaches that we're going to be taking this year actually is identifying those, those schools that maybe have those lower applicant rates and providing some more education and, and marketing and communication to those specific sites.
I think that might sort of overlap with your.
Now, see, now I've got the answer I was looking for.
I'll connect the dots eventually.
No, we did. It was a poor question. It was my fault. This is great.
Remind me, don't you have like an informational, all-call like of people who are just interested to learn about the process?
Yes.
Because I would think, I mean, just in my experience of just even learning how to apply to something like this is part of the.
It absolutely is. That's the biggest piece. So we, we open our applications on November 1st, they stay open until December 2nd. During the month of October, excuse me, during the month of October will be our biggest communication push. And so we provide parent nights. Stevens Department has been incredible to work with in helping us create some promotional materials. We will have postcards that go home. We love to utilize Backpack Express and some emails that will be, some personalized emails that'll help as well.
Some of the reasons of trying to define choice more clearly, understand what exact programs are so we can be much more intentional and focused at communicating to our parents effectively. That's happened in magnet fairly tightly, but I would say across the spectrum, it has not. So this is, will allow us to be more targeted and build supports to ensure everyone knows.
And we see great improvement, but wouldn't you know, it'd be like us to go, well, what about this? What about that? Not to take away from the great improvements in terms of free, reduced lunch and full pay, but like always, great improvement, but we hope to see more.
Yeah, absolutely. You and I are tracking there. For sure. So just as Dr. Dunham was, was mentioning, we do have, we've, we've had a good hold of magnet schools at, within that choice program range and so now we've been able, we're offering supports to our other magnet sites as well on how they can better target their, their prospective students as well. So we're going to be shifting gears into some success portions here. So we're going to start with attendance. So this is Wolf attendance only. So I'm going to set us up over here on this chart because we are going to be utilizing this format in a couple of different slides coming up. So on the left-hand side, we have a district comparison where we are able to see where our district fell within fiscal year 16, all the way down to 19. The orange cells are going to represent the students as fifth graders, so those fifth grade students who attended Wolf. Directly to the left of that cell is going to be their fourth grade year, to the right, we have our sixth grade year. So as you can see, students are coming to us outperforming their peers in that realm. They are performing at a higher percentage level than their, than their, their like peers. And then during and after is the same statement, same true statement there.
This, okay, sorry.
And I failed to mention, this is a 90-90 attendance. This is not 80-80 as well.
So this is attendance, this is not, this is not, did they stay in the district after Wolf or did they not?
So for these scores here, they had to have a paired score, so they at least had to be with us fourth and fifth and sixth grade.
If they transferred out, they're not in the data set because we needed a before, during and after metric, trying to get a feel of what they were, what they do before they came, what they do during the year, what they do after. And we'll do data on attendance and achievement also.
Okay, we are going to shift into some iReady data analysis here. So comparable setup to our attendance chart, we have our fifth grade district average over to the left and same true statement, students are coming to us slightly higher and staying higher and as sixth grade again. So these are, again, are those paired scores that we were just discussing. So students had to have a recordable score for their fourth, fifth grade and sixth grade year. We only have a couple of years data set here because iReady came into our system in around 2015 and we had started with some pilot programs in our magnets. We're not a part of that pilot program. If you are curious why we have two years there. And then we have our math. So same, same statement is true for our math scores as well.
So students typically come in at an, at an advanced rate and they stay that way?
Yep, yep. All right, transitioning into our second fifth grade program, Academy of Exploration. So the Academy of Exploration is in partnership with the Discovery Center. Sounds like the last time you guys were there, it was a little toasty inside, so. We have a STEM themed program here. This is for 40 fifth graders and it is an incredible opportunity. I absolutely love what we're able to do with AOE. So we have our student demographics, starting over here in 2016, we'll see that's 69% full pay as we are moving across that chart. Right now, this year, we do have a 50% free and reduced lunch rate, so again, a step in the right direction there. Our 90-90 attendance for Academy of Exploration is comparable to those of their Wolf compadres over there. If I go too fast through any of these, just let me know. Transition into ELA for the Academy of Exploration. So again, the students, just as Dr. Taylor was saying, has came into us slightly above their peers, continuing and after.
Is that academic score part of the calculation for, I mean, is, is there an intentional or an implicit outreach to those students who are outperforming? I mean, it's a lottery, right? It's not entirely random because certain things are weighted, but is academic performance in the year that he or she applies, is that part of the mix?
Nope. The, we, we do not control for any academic portion, so that is one thing that we take great pride with our choice programs is that sometimes kiddos come into us and they are struggling in that traditional setting and they have found a niche. And so I, I would be very saddened if we missed any student from, from their academic achievement. So we, we do, we have some great collaboration with our special education department and, and being able to receive students with IEPs with open arms and great, great partnership there. So we have our math.
Interesting point, Charles, if you think of the complexities, we've increased the free and reduced rate of the programs, but still, those students are still performing at about the same levels, coming in very high, moving over throughout. So the questions are, right, as we think about future programming, what are the things we control for? So we moved that number in order to try to create a more diverse environment, but there are other things that you can control for, right, to start to think about. So that's where we're thinking, no action, but we're thinking, right, as we think about what's the future of choice look like.
All right, we're going to switch into our eighth grade program, which is the Health Sciences Academy. It is housed at Mercy Hospital. It is home to 50 of our eighth graders with an interest in health sciences and healthcare or they just want a unique learning opportunity for their eighth grade year. So you are going to see in this demographic chart, a little bit of a different representation than the Academy of Exploration and Wolf. And so the reason for that is eighth grade is a hard year to leave your friends. Eighth grade is a hard year to leave where you've been rooted for the last two years and we have seen that and so our applicant pool is a little bit smaller than our, than those of our fifth grade programs. So we, we work through alternates and unfortunately, we work through those free and reduced lunch student populations a little quicker and then we, we fill with our full pay after. The attendance data is comparable to Academy of Exploration and Wolf, so those HSA students are coming into us again as seventh graders, slightly higher than those of their district years and then their eighth grade year and then their freshman year to the right.
They tend to, and it's not unique to the HSA, they tend to drop particularly on attendance that next year out. I mean, part of it could be this, that's the freshman year of high school, right, the first year of high school, so in this instance, but is it sort of the, wow, if I'm not in Bass Pro, it's not quite as cool the next year out? I mean, because I think the attendance kind of dropped there too, which is sort of a good sign, right, for, for Wolf, but, but do you have any sense of why it drops a little bit that next year out?
We, we don't at this time.
I think the two, the assumptions, but I'm not sure a little bit is, those are transition years. So if you look fifth to sixth, elementary to middle, we see a drop, right? And then eighth to ninth, we see a drop as a system and it's playing out with the same student population. So those transition years are tough attendance years for us, those first years and after a transition, so something for us to continue to work on.
While we're chasing this rabbit over to the side, I'll just throw in my question of, I have two questions, one or two parts to the question. Do we track, let's say, let's just only choose an example. So we have a student goes to Wolf. Do we track to see if those students stay in our systems, stay in our system if they were in our system? were in our system beforehand? Or do we track, let's say, a student that comes into our system for Wolf and stays in our system? Do we track that either way? That's part one. And my second part is, the question is, what do we do, because I'm assuming we do something, but what do we do to prepare students and parents for reentry?
Oh, that's a great question. So, to answer the first question, are you talking specifically about the path that they take or are they just staying within our district?
I'm talking about a kid that went to X school, then they go to Wolf for one year and then they go back to X school or...
So, I don't have those data points with me right now, but that would be something that we would be able to check into and see what that looks like. We do have a large population of homeschool, I mean, I wouldn't say a large, but we do have a population of our homeschool and private schools that come to our choice programs. And so, they do typically tend to go back into their traditional setting. So, I don't have the answer to that question.
Okay. I'm just curious, because I hear from different people in the community that their kid deals with reentry issues.
Yeah.
And then, they have to find alternative solutions because of maybe their learning style and what they got used to. And so, I'm just curious, as a district, how can we prepare them for reentry? It's almost like when you send a kid at the college level overseas for a semester, you have to prepare them for the cultural shock before they get there and you have to prepare them for the reverse culture shock when they come back.
I think that you are setting the stage for what we're going to be discussing potentially as we're moving through. So, we have thought, we have been giving some thought to that. And we would love to be able to continue to provide some different opportunities to those students that have definitely found their niche. So, I hope that, in a few slides, that might answer a couple of your questions, I think. All right. So, Health Sciences Academy, continue on, continuing with the HSA students iReady assessments. You will see that we do not have a freshman score. We do not utilize the iReady assessment for our freshmen. And then, we have math. So, true statements for ELA and math with our Health Sciences Academy. It is comparable to AOE and Wolf as well. So, this is a chart that you have been exposed to in the past and a huge celebration, definitely something that we are proud of and something that we are listening to. So, as you can see, the demand absolutely exceeds our availability. And we have a total of 136 seats that are available for all three of our current magnet programs. For the last six years, we averaged 760 applicants for those 136 seats. So, there is a great interest from our families. There is a great calling for such opportunities and we are looking forward to some potential expansion opportunities there. So, in addition to the numbers, we are also seeking out that stakeholder satisfaction. We are wanting to make sure that that feedback is heard in our programming and that we are able to take what is working and continue to strengthen and then identify those opportunities. So, parent satisfaction, over the last three years for Wolf and Academy of Exploration, parents have noticed that student engagement levels are at or above the district average as reported by their Panorama survey. So, they're coming to us and they're enjoying their time. They are engaged at a high level and that Panorama survey will support that statement. Over the la, over the same period, our Health Sciences parents have noticed a slightly lower student engagement as compared to the district average, but definitely trending in the right direction. So, I know specifically our teachers at HSA are aware of this and it again falls back into that eighth grade transition year. It is a tough year. And so, our teachers are working to become very purposeful for that transition time and creating a culture that is ready to meet those students with open arms when they come to us.
Some quick questions. So, you said, "Parents noted slightly lower." So, this is not students indicated a slightly lower engagement, but the parents?
Yes.
This was a parent response?
Yes.
So, they believe their students are slightly less engaged.
Yes.
So, do we have a similar question that the students answered?
Yes.
Oh, it's down below?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I did read over this, but I guess I didn't.
That's all right.
Yeah. So, this is a parent thinking about their eighth grader.
Yes.
Okay. I get it.
And then, our Health Sciences students, they do the same question. They do have a slightly lower than the district comparison, but again, taking steps in the right direction. We are seeing some positive improvements the last couple of years in our survey results. Wolf and Academy of Exploration students have indicated that they've had very high classroom engagement levels as compared to the district average.
And HSA is a little bit, a bit of an outlier compared to the Wolf and AOE. It seems to me even on sort of iReady math, end of year, et cetera, they're substantially above, they're still above the district comparison during the HSA year, but substantially lower than they were in the previous year. Again, it's a very small N, so I don't know if there's a statistically significant relationship or not here, but it's at least interesting. And I wonder if it's tied in some ways to that kind of, not amorphous, but engagement means lots of things.
Absolutely.
But engagement, greater engagement would presumably lead to greater, higher performance on iReady. Not that iReady is the be-all and end-all of performance, but it's one metric that we do. It is interesting.
It is interesting.
Thank you for that, Dr. Taylor. All right. The next lesson that we are going to be discussing from our what we know portion of our presentation is that we've seen the demand. We've seen the lottery application numbers. We have seen some high satisfaction rates, especially with our Wolf and Academy of Exploration program. So, being able to take those experiences and replicate them to scale for a much larger number. So, taking some different lessons from those magnet schools and being able to capitalize in some different programs that our district has, such as Explore and Experience SPS. And it also provides us with a creative way to utilize some space as well that our partners have provided for us. So, we're going to be transitioning into our next portion of our presentation here. So, spending the past year getting our arms around choice programs, we have implemented our first initial evaluations of all six of our homegrown SPS choice programs. We do not evaluate IB, so they would not be included in that evaluation process because they are evaluated from an outside source. So, we have some next steps and that's going to be touching on what I just talked about, our evaluation and support of our current programs and then some potential expansion and new program opportunities and then touching base on that transportation study that I promised you earlier in this. Right here, we have our cycle of what our current choice programs will be going through over the next couple of years. So, when a program is not in an evaluation year, I had mentioned that support year and mentorship year, they're able to make connections with the choice program office and then we can continue to support them in whatever indicator of their evaluation that they choose that they would like to focus on. So, that support of our current programs is a great priority and definitely something that we are proud of. We have some unique opportunities with the Academy of Exploration. We have entered into some very preliminary conversations with our partner about some potential additions of some grade levels and some classrooms. And so, we've seen some great success and a program that is established. And so, if we have an opportunity to explore some different opportunities with that program, we would like to start those discussions with our partner. And so, we are thrilled. And I, this is the cutest kid ever. Caught my eye there.
I'm going to give you, he's super cute, but we've had a lot of competition tonight.
Oh, my God.
I'm not giving you the top.
That was a major distraction. He was so adorable. They were so...
Jesus, kids.
All right. So, that is our current program expansion proposal that we have. And then, we have some new program expansions that we would like to show you all. So, the Academy of Fine and Performing Arts. So, Springfield Little Theater has recently acquired their own educational facility. They reached out to SPS with a, an opportunity to house a magnet school within their facility. So, this would be modeled after our current fifth grade programs. And it is an absolutely incredible opportunity for a niche within our community that we don't currently have a program for. So, these students would be exposed to some visual arts, some music, musical theater and dance, acting, and so many exploratory options that SLT would be able to give to them.
Can I vote now? Aye.
Aye.
That is awesome. Can I, can I do it?
I don't know the rules. I don't know the rules.
You just said no to me.
You're asking a question that you already know the answer for.
Looks, that's, wow, that's cool.
All right. Next one. An Agricultural Sciences Magnet School. So, the DAR Family Foundation recently approached us with a really incredible opportunity to have a potential magnet school that would be an agricultural-themed school. So, focusing on food resiliency and some exposure to the wide array of agricultural careers that are out there. This would be primarily targeted at our upper elementary grades and lower middle school grades. We have a six-classroom proposal with a two-classroom phase-in model. So, we would want to make sure that we really had our legs under us before we were adding any additional grade levels there. And this would be a facility that would be gifted to us from the DAR Family Foundation and in partnership with the Missouri State University DAR Ag Center. So, this timing of this Agricultural Sciences Magnet School does directly align with some of our initiatives that we do have in our district currently with the Farm-to-School Initiative and then the Hillcrest Environmental Sciences Career Pathway as well. So, in addition to a district focus, there is also a great focus from our Department of Education and the passing of House Bill 1010, which is a commitment to agricultural programs in the elementary world. And so, we would love to have a partnership with DUCY to, you know, kind of be a driving force and an innovator within the state and such programs. So, again, another unique and exciting opportunity that could be a potential.
So, can I vote yes on this?
I'm voting with her. I'm ready.
And is that little fellow holding a crayfish?
I know. Do you see what he's got?
Something I wouldn't hold is what he's got.
Right. That's why I designed myself for this program. Because I can see that.
I think it's a crayfish.
That's really great on a lot of levels.
Yeah. It's an incredible opportunity.
Projected down the road, this would be at the DAR facility?
Yes. Yeah. Projected down the road. So, we are very preliminary conversation.
Bestigation mode, but that's the place where they've discussed and proposed Missouri State a potential opportunity.
Definitely preliminary conversation. All right. So, we have another unique opportunity. And Alina, I think that this might be answering the question that you had had earlier about providing some different opportunities as students progress. So, we have Jarrett Steam Academy as a proposal here. So, utilizing the unique opportunity and a relocation of Jarrett Middle School to explore some opportunities for a complete comprehensive choice program. So, this could be a pathway to our Academy of Exploration and Wolf students. This could be a whole school integration or a program within a school. But again, these are very early conversations, but something that we're excited to explore.
This would be at the new Jarrett.
Yeah, it would be the new Jarrett. And most steam and STEM stuff is, as she's talked about, she, the question was design because we're in the middle of design, Jarrett. We've already done some research on that because we'd hate to go two steps forward and two steps back or one step back. Is, the majority of that is equipment-based, right? So, steam and STEM can be pushed into just about any school environment. You might want some different wiring and those kind of things, but we're still quite a ways out from that. But it's basically, mostly equipment-based.
Thank you for that, Alfred. Okay. Transitioning into some fiscal impacts. So, the way that we have set up our charts here, just for us to be able to reference very quickly, we have our current magnet school fiscal impact. So, this is including Wolf, Academy of Exploration, and Health Sciences. So, in a typical magnet school setup, we are going to have a partnership with a partner who is gifting us the facility. And so, with the Academy of Exploration, we entered into our initial year with a third-party partner that was paying for our lease at the Discovery Center, another local nonprofit. And so, over the years, we have actually ended up accruing that within our own operational budget. And so, that is included there. But the typical setup is that a partner would be providing the space for us. So, included in this fiscal note here, we have our staffing projections. So, we have six full-time classroom teachers and then we have itinerant staff that provide classes such as music, art, PE. And so, that equals about one full FTE. So, you can be able to see our staff here. We wouldn't be able to make anything happen with our incredible nurse and our apparel. So, they do a great job in providing some extra student services to us. And then, our annual operational budget, that is going to be inclusive of things such as transportation, supplies, professional learning opportunities. And that is where we're currently at with our three magnet schools. So, this setup is going to look comparable with our coming slide. So, if you have any questions about where those numbers came from, feel free to let me know. So, the Academy of Exploration expansion, so this would be, in this middle column here, this would be representative of four classrooms. And then, to the right, six classrooms. So, we're taking the current model of AOE and adding two classrooms for each year here. With the Academy of Exploration expansion, there could be some opportunities for some facility upgrades, just to be able to maximize that instructional space. So, that could be an opportunity if we were to take that path.
So, I'm not a financial whiz, but part of me thinks it's a bit misleading to look at the staffing amounts because we would have had to provide that staffing for those students in another location too. It's not like additional. It's like a transfer.
Some additional required, right? Because it's not a pure removal when you're taking 40 kids from across the district from a, let's say, 20 schools.
So, it costs a little more to do this for lower numbers.
Certainly would be an added statistic, right? There, over time, as it scales, there are some reductions, but it's not direct. It's not immediate.
It's not dollar-for-dollar. I'm with you.
It's an additional investment to expand, for sure.
Can you give me, I'm sorry, all these clarifying questions, but just the timeline. You're saying you're proposing this?
Not proposing anything. Just showing the fiscal impact.
You're just, and you're not giving a timeline on this. You're just showing if we expand it, what it would look like.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, because we, I mean, I remember the history of this facility and when it was created and started and the partnership, yada, yada, yada. But we could look at the facility rental as we would have to buy equipment. I mean, we would have to buy our own equipment even if we moved it or whatever. So, that expenses.
And we would also probably go back and look if we're going to expand for a non-profit partner to come to the table with us as we, especially as we think about steam. If you're going to advance it beyond this to a full program, potentially Jarrett bringing up back someone significant to the table with a long-term commitment, we would probably expand because I wouldn't need that cost ourselves.
Sure. Yeah.
Awesome. Are we, we're done?
Almost.
We're excited. We're ready.
So, we have the Academy of Fine and Performing Arts. So, we have some one-time costs that are listed up here at the top. So, this is making sure that we are starting off on the very best foot that we could if we were to take this route. So, we would have some furniture fixtures and equipment, technological upgrades and program research and development. So, we have some startup fees here and then we have our annual ongoing, which would be comparable to the Academy of Exploration. So, with the Academy of Fine and Performing Arts, there would, it is also a local nonprofit, so we would have a facility rental there. So, again, looking for some potential third-party partnerships. The Agricultural Sciences Magnet Schools, so this is most comparable to Wolf and Health Sciences with the facility as a potential gift. So, we have our one-time startup fees up here at the top. You can see with a year-one implementation, we would start with 50 students and then as we are progressing, with a potential to end up with six classrooms with an impact of 150 students there. So, yep.
I'm sorry. You want to finish your statement?
Go ahead.
Can you back up just a little bit to the performing?
To the...
Fine and Performing Arts slide?
Yep.
Just the one back. Okay. So, this is fiscal impact to us, but you don't have a piece there that would be shared with a partner?
So, this, again, would be comparable to the Academy of Exploration. So, this...
Of what our costs are, but doesn't include what the partnership with Springfield Little Theater would be?
So, the partnership would be us utilizing their facility and some potential usage of some staffing and their expertise to help in providing those experiences to our students.
So, this could be certainly more, you're not including what they would be throwing into the bargain than there is. This is just our part.
So, we would have to see where...
I'm just wondering because with the partnership, it's just kind of interesting to know how this partnership's working out.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
What are their in kinds, contribute, and will have those represented?
I understand, because you're not there, but it's just interesting, because it appears that with this next one, you can go ahead, you were getting ready to talk about, yeah, it appears that our family, yeah.
Further discussion where they're ready to potentially commit.
Yeah, to put some money-
Those are different scenarios between a non-for-profit company that is kind of in startup mode or transitioning, not really startup, but transitioning to their own facility and a different environment here. So we will be working through each one with those partners, determining if there are partners to come along them, like we've had in other scenarios. Kind of gives you a state of affairs, really.
Remind me again where the proposed location would be for the Fine and Performing Arts?
The educational facility with Springfield Little Theater, it's off Walnut and Florence.
Okay.
Most closely related to Amy Cake's, my favorite bakery in town.
Was that a former SPS building?
Yeah.
McDaniel.
Yeah, it was McDaniel.
So we have our startup over here with our agricultural sciences cost here, so facility would be provided, program research and development would take place during that first year. And to ensure our students were ready to go, furniture fixtures and equipment would be included there. And then staffing and annual operations would be that annual ongoing.
On the staffing, but this would probably sound like a smart aleck question, but 2.34 teachers, what is 3, what is .34 of a teacher? Is that person going to go to another school?
Yes. Yeah, so most closely, the easiest example to think of would be like our music teachers that are bouncing to a couple of different facilities.
That's what I figured.
Yeah. So we would have two full-time classroom teachers, and then that .34 would be the itinerant staff.
It makes hiring really hard, hire a third of you.
That happens not just at our magnet schools, but small elementary schools that split staff between buildings.
They do that title one quite often.
All right. So then, again, we have that unique opportunity with Jarrett Middle School, so we have included a fiscal chart as well. So one thing that we have learned in our, in our choice programs and our coordinator roles is that it's important to have some staff that is dedicated to such programming, that would be able to help with professional learning opportunities, some different trainings, and some, you know, just a full-time commitment or a commitment into that program. Transportation analysis, so I, I am excited for the possibilities, so trying not to get hopes up, but excited. So transportation is not currently provided to our choice programs as we know. It is, it is a barrier to families, and we will be spending, Springfield Public Schools will be spending 2019, 20 undergoing their transportation analysis, and choice programs would be a part of that analysis.
Good.
I absolutely think it's a barrier to entry.
So, that's all I have for you all.
Well, you know, we don't have many questions.
That's what I'm here for.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You know, are there any questions from the board or comments?
Just a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
This is my fourth year on the board, so, and this is the deepest dive I've seen of the choice program presentation. So I just know that that takes a lot of work, and I want to acknowledge that. So I appreciate the context, that you bring us up to speed of where we're at, where we've been, that you give us a clear picture of the current reality. It's very transparent with the data, so I love that. And then I love that you're giving us a vision for the future as well, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, so just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank you for the work that you and your teammates are doing on this, because I think what, this presentation, I think is pretty courageous and bold, because you've put a lot out there tonight. I mean, you dropped a lot of things, and they're fairly specific things. You showed your work, and your work has been, for the most part, pretty objective, where some of these sacred cows of choice programs, you guys have gone in and done some butchering. Or filleting.
Of the cow?
Yeah, yeah.
As a vegetarian, I respect that.
But you showed your work, and so the work is available. This is a public document, and so I'll come back to that very observation. You named names and places, you didn't, you didn't monkey around, you didn't tease anything, you named names and places, and you identified specific themes. So I, I think that's really courageous and bold, and I appreciate that a lot. I think one of the things that we need to pay attention to tonight, and we need to lead in this way, is that I didn't get that this is a proposal. Nothing is being proposed. And so I think we need to be careful with our language. This might be something that's being imagined, being discussed, these are possibilities, but this is not a fait accompli.
Yeah.
And from what I can tell, there is movement on it, but it's not a done deal either. There's, you're not asking us to do anything tonight, right? Except to think about it, I guess. And one of our responsibilities, I think, is to keep factual, because detractors of this kind of thing will then come to us and say, well, looks like, looks like it's all in already. I don't detect that. I don't detect that it's all in and that it's a done deal. People, because of the boldness of this and the specificity of it, I think people might observe or conclude that, but I don't conclude that. And in your view, who is more correct, me or this person I invented?
Interesting you put it in my way, because I think we all know where I am.
No, I mean, I mean this person, this person, right here. I assume that I'm more accurate in where we are with this.
Correct.
Okay. I think it's, I hope that everybody in this room heard that.
Thank you for pointing that out.
But yeah, I, well, and thank you for being so bold tonight. It was one heck of a presentation.
Thank you.
I think it's important to see that our job as a leadership is to bring you updates on the strategic plan and the strategies that are in the strategic plan. This is purely articulated in it, so we are projecting what's possible, right? And the work of the leadership to prepare for choice expansion, because we have had feedback regarding that, historically, that that's something that is, or not, there is demand for, right? Because then the data shows that. The performance is strong, but there's also other things we have to think through, right?
I like those numbers.
Lots of lenses, the data, equity lens, our transportation analysis, lots of, and there's a budget impact. So there's lots of steps, and our job, our goal tonight is educate you, bring you up to speed on what we know about choice, what we've done to solidify it as what it actually is in our system, as we think about moving forward with it. We had to have it clear, put an accountability system into it, and then tell you what people are kind of proposing to us and what we see as possibilities as we try to move that strategic plan forward. Tim is exactly correct. This is not a proposal tonight, this is information, or we're going to seek your feedback. Are these things that you believe we should be interested in as ways to execute the strategic plan? Are there things that we should be thinking about on top of the things that we've talked to you about, right? The equity component, the transportation access, the multiple grade levels, the types of programs that we've kind of talked to you about, whether it be fine arts or steam or agriculture, so that we can take that and decide how to proceed and potentially come back with an actual proposal. But it's not going to be all of this at one time, right? You'll see that this would be a multiple years, but one of the components of next steps is get, seek your feedback, and then try to decide what is the right next step as we think of budget season coming up. Because it's September, we get into budget season very quickly, and for these decisions, we actually get in more quickly than normal because they potentially affect enrollment applications times, and obviously, they project out even a couple of years into the budget cycle. So if you're going to talk to a community partner about a facility, that would take a year to build plus, then we have to talk beyond one year of budget, we have to talk multiple years of budget and kind of our forecast. So this is providing you with an up-to-date on what the administration has been working on regarding this part of the strategic plan, seeking your feedback, and then we'll kind of proceed from there.
So Steve?
I'll look for Tim's comments. I think that saw some excitement here from the board on some of these things, because I do believe that we like to see that you're thinking ahead, and something very important that we're all kind of looking at, like right, looking at now, is how we can meet the needs of students with diverse learning interests. And so when you bring in things like fine, or talking about fine and performing arts and agricultural science and the steam possible, and others, it's great to throw it out there. And we will certainly get feedback, you're right. And so that's a good place to start, and I hope no one was under the impression that these are done deals, because they're not, because you were not able to answer many of our questions, because we're already ready to hear more. So, but it is, I think it's a great effort on the part of the district to consider that we have students with lots of interests and how to continue to keep them engaged with all of their interests, because it's, you've got to keep moving, keep, you know, trying to stay a step ahead of these kids and all the things they want to do and think they want to do.
Yeah.
And to Tim's point, this is the first time you've seen this deep in the dive. We haven't went this far, we've had some of it in our strategic reports, we certainly had a retreat regarding this issue. So take time to process, reflect, provide your board officer feedback, provide myself feedback, reach out to Kelsey and Ben if you have additional questions, and we'll continue the conversation, so.
Thank you, guys. And I want to publicly acknowledge Kelsey and all the work she's done in the last 18 months or so. It's been really great work, so.
Thank you.
Very obvious to me. Good job, yes.
Thank you.
Bravo.
Oh, did you get his joke?
I see what you did there.
Somebody had to do it, it was hanging there.
I know, you've probably never heard that one.
So easy.
Enough Timothy.
Anything else on 702? Then we move to 8.01, which is board policy adoption revisions, and there are none for us to consider, so we move on to new business, 9.01, and there are no new business items. So we go to unfinished business, and these are votes. The first one is 10.01, the Local Model Compliance Plan for Special Education. That was presented at the last, at our study session, and it is attached to the agenda. The recommended action is that the board approve the Local Model Compliance Plan for Special Education as presented. I'll hear a discussion, or I'll hear a motion?
So moved.
Move for approval. Charles and Denise, thank you. Do we need to discuss any further? Are we ready to vote?
Ready.
Eyes have it. And so the next item is 10.02, Medical Stop Loss Coverage, and Carol is at the podium.
Yes, so these next two items were presented for first read at the previous meeting, but at that point in time, we did not have the final information because negotiations were still underway. And we have for you this evening, with regard to the stop loss coverage, a recommendation that the district would continue with Sun Life as our stop loss insurance provider. And again, this protects the district's Health Benefit Trust Fund for our self-insurance program by capping any exposures that we may have for catastrophic claims that occur for our staff and their families. We provided information regarding the fact that our district broker, JW Terrell, navigated this for us, and they do a fantastic job in helping us get the most competitive bids. We did have 12 providers were contacted, and Sun Life Financial, they've been our provider since 2014, and they provided the best pricing for us. The estimated fiscal note is $1,702.840 based on planned enrollment, and this is budgeted within the Health Benefit Trust Fund. I will provide an additional note for you. I've provided you information regarding our challenges with the Health Benefit Trust Fund and the direction that it has been headed, and so you did approve some rate changes to support that. At this point in time, we are approximately where we anticipated we would be in that fund. We'll continue to keep you updated each month as we progress forward. So that's the recommendation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Carol, the rate changes do not take effect until?
That's January, right, so we still have a few months to go through.
Any other questions, comments for Carol? Recommended action is that the board approve the recommendation for stop loss coverage. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Thank you. Alina, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Charles. Are we ready to vote? And the eyes have it. The next item is 10.03, iPad Refresh.
Yes, so this item was also presented for first read at the last meeting, and at that point, we were on the street with our bid process for the technology lease, and the award allocation recommended is to Clayton Holdings LLC. That is a division of Commerce Bank. Commerce Bank happens to be our depository, but they had to bid competitively, just like any other financial institution. We have an estimated annual payment at this point in time of $251,497.15. I will provide you reference that this is budgeted within our capital fund budget that you approved in June, and at that point in time, we were estimating this annual payment would come in at $305,000 each year, so this is under budget. And the recommendation is indeed Clayton Holdings Savings, and that is for the 1,950 Apple iPad minis for fifth-grade generation tablets and cases for them. The approximate, per case and device cost is $380 each. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those. I should also mention that this was navigated also with our council, who helps us through any type of legal transactions for bonds or lease agreements, and that would be Gilmore and Bell. Jim helped us.
And if you took the time to read the resolution at the end, that's, that's an attachment to the agenda, you would tell that it was prepared by Gilmore and Bell.
You're wordy.
It is a, an impressive document.
And the motion is as follows. Would you like to read that? I'd like to read that.
No, I'm just going to read the recommended action, which is enough, as it is, that the board approves the technology equipment purchase presented and authorizes the execution and delivery of a lease purchase agreement with Clayton Holdings LLC as lessor for the acquisition, purchase financing, and leasing of certain technology equipment, authorizing the execution and delivery of other documents required in connection therewith, and authorizing all other actions related to the lease purchase financing contemplated by this resolution.
So moved.
Thank you, Jill.
Second.
Thank you, Denise. Are we ready to vote? Eyes have it.
Here he comes, the change order.
So we move to number 11 on the agenda, and these bond project updates and actions, and we welcome Travis Shaw to the podium.
Thank you. Just a few change orders this evening, both of them, two different packages relate to our secure entrances. We have one for package number one, it's a total addition of $8,986, and that will come from a available contingency of $86,852. And then the six individuals for package three result in an addition of $2,763, which comes from an available contingency of $459,109.
I think we can afford it. Any questions for Travis on these change orders? The recommended action is that the board approve the construction contracts, well, let me just put it this way, that the board approved the change orders as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Jill. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Alina. Are we ready to vote? Eyes have it. The change orders are approved. Travis?
And then the next item is for geotechnical services at the new Jarrett Middle School, and this proposal is from Terricon, which would be for 27 separate field borrowings, lab testing, and then the engineering and project delivery. The proposal is for $10,450, so I would entertain any questions that you've got.
That's a good price per boring, when you're doing that many born, poking that many holes into the ground. Any other comments or questions? The recommended action is that the board approve the geotechnical engineering services as presented. Do I hear a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Thank you. Alina, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Charles. Any discussion on this motion? Are we ready to vote? Please vote. Eyes have it. Next item, number 12.01, is Public Comments, and we've had three speakers patiently waiting for their time on the agenda to speak. Before I invite them up one by one, by calling their name, I'm going to just read, I'm going to set this up by reading this from the agenda. The Board of Education will allow comments on topics not related to the printed agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes for each speaker and will be timed by the Board Secretary. It's inappropriate to address the Board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed through the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. We on the Board use this time in our meeting to listen to comments or concerns from you, the public, but we do not comment or engage with speakers during the meeting. If you have materials that you want to share, please provide them to the Board Secretary, and she will distribute them to the Board members. So our first speaker is Emily Hahn. Please come forward. Welcome. And she is going, her topic on tonight is concern for marginalized students. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Emily Hahn, and I've been a member of the Springfield community for 12 years. My husband serves as a physician at a local hospital, and together we have served Green County as foster parents. While we currently parent three children, we are concerned not only about their well-being but also that of other children in Springfield, and we are committed to being an anti-racist family. During the past few years, I've paid attention to reports coming out of Springfield public schools about the treatment of minority students, and the severity has only escalated. I attended an event where students from various marginalized groups were able to share their experiences. I was impressed by their bravery but disappointed in the systems that allow this to continue. Children in Springfield deserve not only safe places to live but also safe places to learn. This begins with educating the people who create the policies for learning environments. I believe many people that grew up in the racial majority, like myself, lack the language to have effective conversations about race. And while sometimes we know the buzzwords, we still often lack the understanding on how to practically apply them in our real lives. Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Together in the Cafeteria was written to help readers understand not only some of the many questions that arise entering into conversations about race, but also the importance of developing a healthy racial identity. This book helps define terms for the conversation, builds a foundation of understanding, and applies specifically to the school setting. I believe this information is so important for the school board to have that I once discussed if it would be possible to read passages aloud in these meetings in five-minute intervals. Ultimately, I decided it would be better for you to have your own copy to read. You will notice that this is the 20th Anniversary Edition, but Dr. Tatum's work is as relevant today as it was in 1997. This serves as a reminder that we have to be consistent in the work of addressing these issues and not just be prompted to act when the next crisis is made public. In this book, Dr. Tatum says, "As I was writing the prologue for the 20th Anniversary Edition of this book, I was struck by how much bad news there was in it. The events of the last two decades have done little to improve the quality of life for those most negatively impacted by the structural racism of our society. Recognizing and acknowledging the persistence of residential and school segregation, the economic inequality that grows from limited access to socio-economically diverse social networks and high-quality education left me feeling disheartened. But I am an optimist by nature, and I have lived long enough to know that meaningful change is possible. I was determined not to give into a sense of despair but rather to actively seek out signs of hope, stories of people making a difference and promising practices that could move others to meaningful action. I find the signs of hope are everywhere. My wish is that you will take time to read this book and become a son of hope to marginalized students in Springfield. Thank you."
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing those.
That's awesome. I wanted to read that.
That is a wonderful thing to do. Thank you. I'll make sure that our absent ones also get their copy. Thank you.
It is a great book.
Our second speaker is Tim Spees. Is it Spees?
Spees.
Thank you. And he is coming to the podium to speak to SPS Management Concerns.
Quote, "Nearly all people can stand adversity, but if you want to test a person's character, give them power." That's Abraham Lincoln. In the case of SPS management, some managers are failing that test badly. So my question is, what are you going to do about them? My name is Tim Spees. I'm a 57-year-old with a lovely wife and four children. I was hired by SPS in June 2019 and came with a sincere desire to apply my skills and experience to help SPS to do the best of my ability. While at SPS, I encouraged people who needed it and had a good attitude while performing my work. For my good, honest, and sincere efforts, I was rewarded an ultimatum by SPS management. Quote, "Stop pointing out problems or we will terminate you." Here are some facts. Two employees left SPS at the same time, but no one but the manager who caused them to leave believed that they left at the same time due to coincidence. In fact, they left due to a toxic work environment of fear caused by the manager of the department. These two former employees, when they left together, took an entire domain of important knowledge with them and left no significant documentation for the complex IT systems, processes, and reports they created. This is a significant failure by the manager. My communicating to other employees that I could not accomplish a task due to the lack of documentation offended the manager and caused the tyrants to come out. On July 22nd this year, I was called into her office to be confronted by herself and her manager. They had put together their little ultimatum document, blessed by the SPS management, and despite my apology, rammed it down my throat. A few facts about this document. Number one, in attempting to justify the simple allegations, it cites SPS policy that does not apply to me or their allegations. For example, in section one, it cites, quote, "unprofessional behavior with coworkers," and the backup documentation provided is communication I had with someone who was not employed by SPS. Perhaps it should concern you that SPS management is making false claims in their legal or formal documents. Please look into it. In justifying the punishment, it cites the policy of, quote, "will maintain courteous and professional relationships and interactions with pupils," unquote. But in my role, I did not interact with pupils. Maybe you're at the place that falsehoods or errors really don't matter to, even if those errors mean a good and decent man was wrongfully and shamefully treated by SPS management and forced to resign to avoid more wrongful and hypocritical treatment. If SPS management is citing policy that does not apply to me, what makes you believe they are accurately representing their reasons to justify forcing my resignation? Please look into this. It matters. If you do so objectively, you will find that the allegations against me are an abuse of power. The remaining employees are afraid to speak candidly about what they have experienced over the past year or so at the hands of this particular manager. Find leaders who are good leaders, servant leaders, not insecure and selfish people who have failed the test of handling power. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your concern. Bringing those to our attention. Our last speaker is Tim Havens, who is going, his non-agenda comment pick is TED Talks. Come on up here, Tim. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for that kind introduction, Mr. Rosemary, and good evening, doctors, I think.
Doctor?
Doctor, doctor.
There's a few.
I have a shortage of black, Hispanic, and Asian teachers in our school system, and it's something that we need to work hard on, and I know we are. I'm not convinced that we can't solve this problem without entrepreneurial determination. We need this diversity in our teaching staff. Been several studies done that have been confirmed by this R-12 district that if a black student has at least one black teacher in the first four years of school, that student is 40% less likely to drop out of school before graduation. This should make hiring teachers of color a priority. Just think about that, just one teacher making that much difference in a student's academic life. Until we can staff our teaching roster properly, it is incumbent on responsible members of the community to make up the shortage as best we can. So I would suggest, for your consideration, that we introduce the school classrooms to TED-type talks by people of black, brown, Asian, and Native Americans that live here in Springfield and Green County and that have an interesting story to tell about their lives or history in the Ozarks, literature, art, government, or music. A study session in the classroom would follow as an exception of that TED Talk for the next couple of days. Students could give their own interpretation of the talk. If you remember, we discussed Shakespeare in high school, and we learned a lot more from the discussion than we did from the initial reading. I made up a list of people that I know that have interesting things to say, of 50 or so people. I believe we could get those people to volunteer, and we could cover all the grade schools with, in each class, say, four times a year. I would volunteer myself, if you would accept me, to develop the list of TED Talkers, and I would work out a schedule and coordinate it with each school and teacher. The lady at the Choice Program spoke about community involvement. This is an excellent way to do it. I had already talked to one lady about maybe giving a TED Talk at the soon-to-be Carroll Brown High School, Lynda Carroll Brown High School. So I was going to talk to that principal about maybe the guilty of giving a trial run on the TED Talk. But there are so many people here, if you really get talked about their life, they're very interesting people. I don't know if you all knew Etta Moulton, Moulton. Have you heard of her? She's from Springfield. And she was in a movie, she was in the first Bernadette Porgy in Best in the Movie. She was in a movie with Bing Crosby, flying down to Rio. She's from Springfield, and some of our people here know her. And she married a really important man in Chicago, and they became philanthropists. And she lived to be over 102, and they had a birthday party for her. And some of our people from Springfield got that birthday party. But she had a real interesting life, and people like that could give these TED Talks. And I think that our black community would benefit, but I also think the biggest benefits are for the white students to understand the culture and see people as human beings and important to the community. So I will hope you'd entertain that idea. I don't think, I don't think we could miss with it. I think it would help until we can get more black and Hispanic and Asian teachers into the schools. So that's all I have. If you have anything you'd like to ask me.
Anything for Tim? Do you have that list?
Do I have what?
Do you have a list right now?
I have it at home. I can, yeah, I could get that to you in an email pretty quick.
You may want to send that to our secretary.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That's, that's all the applications I had to speak, right? Agree? Okay. Then let's go straight to reports. John?
I will start with Carol.
Thank you. The only thing that I would care to share with you at this point in time, since I had enough hours or minutes, rather, at the podium, we do have that transportation analysis on the street. It was let in August, and we, and proposals being received September 27th, and our recommendation will be coming forward to you with regard to the consultant that we would hire to provide that analysis for us. So the analysis would likely take place in the months of October and November.
Fantastic.
And with our student count settling and with looking at where those students are landing, we do have a few additional teaching positions that are open and available, so those individuals who are in, if we have a couple of classroom positions as well as special education position and speech language and solid position that we are currently hiring for, those were all of our students that were recruited. We would encourage you to share that news with those who are currently in. And I would just want to take a second and echo Carol's comments.
And about the September payroll, our teams have been working very hard to ensure that payroll is completed on time and accurately, and they've put in hours and hours over the last several weeks, as well as long weekends, to ensure that we are ready to meet the demands of the payroll, and we are excited to do that work. But I just want to publicly thank the HR and payroll teams for their efforts.
I just wanted to follow up on the foundation's report tonight and mention how exciting it was to follow along with the foundation as they did the back-to-school grants today. And we had a couple of media that followed along as well, including KY3 and Color 10. They went to Williams Elementary and were able to experience the excitement of the staff and the students as they, with support for ongoing projects there. Had a great ribbon-cutting ceremony at Weller Elementary this week that was widely covered by the newsletter, Color 10 and KY3, and it was so exciting to see the Weller team come together and celebrate the generosity of the community and the donors who made that possible. We had three semifinalists from Central High School, that emerited semifinalist contest, and that was exciting news to celebrate those students, and it was widely covered in the media. Finally, we're working with our health services team to promote our flu clinics, which begin next week. And as you know, as part of the strategic work at the district, we want to see the number of flu vaccines administered in each of our schools increase. And so we're working strategically with each of our building and department leaders to make sure that parents understand that those are opportunities, free vaccinations for their children, and we know that that can help drive a boost in attendance throughout this winter. And then finally, today, we issued a news release in partnership with the City of Springfield and EJ Justice Initiative, an essay contest throughout our schools that will kick off and run through November with scholarship opportunities to be announced at the Dr. Martin Luther King Celebration Event in January. And so an opportunity for our students to really focus on issues of racial justice and how that is important in our community across our country. And so we'll be working closely with our Equity and Access team to make sure our students understand this opportunity and participate in it.
Thank you. Just a couple additional updates. As many of you know, I've been reprioritizing a little bit of time to start my mornings at some schools this year, so I've had the opportunity, beginning in September, for all 50 schools over the next few months. Weaver, Sunshine, and Portland in the last week. It's been awesome to connect with our faculty and staff in a casual environment, and I see all the wonderful work that's been going on by our team. So, great visits. In addition, some of the things that you have helped advance, we know we've got the opposite, awesome opportunity to introduce Avat to you tonight, and her team that is already kind of in place was working to develop equity training that you helped authorize for expansion this year, and that is all to be done by the end of first quarter. So that is underway, and we're getting great feedback from our faculty and staff around the engagement and the conversations. In addition, tomorrow, our partnership with Missouri State, who's coming in to deliver facing racism training to all of our senior leadership team members as well as our equity champions. So that will happen over five days in the next two months, and we're looking forward to the benefits that brings to our team also. In addition, you know, advisor, the Equity and Diversity Advisory Council continues to meet. They're three meetings in, and I think they, their next meeting is next week. So Jill, thanks for your leadership, and continue to look forward to what we hear from that team in a few months. We're presenting much of the same data that you see, right, regarding the student discipline and attendance. Will be additional around staffing and our percentages and how that's changed over the last couple, or last decade, as well as some academic achievement data that will be coming your way very soon also. The Academic Achievement Report, just for your knowledge, we did study session, as you know, in September on Goal One. Goal Two comes in October. It will be two sections. So we'll do process measures in the first section when we come together October 1st, and then achievement metrics on the 15th when we come back together, primarily, two reasons. Number one, it's a long meeting. In order to cover all of that, as you know, we covered two hours worth the other night, and that meeting was two hours 40-plus, I think, last year. And the more important reason is that DESI won't allow us to push out those data until they release the APR metrics publicly statewide on projected for October 10th. So we'll follow our academic metrics up on October 15th, and we'll be right after that. That is it in the area of administrative reports. Real quick, let me, if I'll just transition to that. As you know, if you've been following MSBA and other things, we had a special session last week. Not much of that really pertained to education in general, but there was one interesting element. If you've read your MSBA bulletin hearing on government oversight that took place during the special session, some of the virtual bill that's been put into place and the lawsuits that played out regarding a for-profit provider and its partnership with the district were kind of discussed in that. So MSBA sent out a bulletin. If you want to watch the hearing, you're welcome to dig in, but it tells you a little bit of maybe what's to come, if I should know, I would think, and important topics that we'll need to stay tuned to. So that's it. Legislative update. I will have for you next meeting, the previous platform that we supported last year, so that you can start reviewing. I know MSBA is in the middle of developing their platform also, and you'll get feedback to, on that during the MSBA meeting, just about a week out, I do believe. So legislation time is starting to kick up, so it's, the season is upon us.
Yes. How exciting. Thank you, John. Thank you, John, and your team. 14 is Board of Education Discussion. Are there any comments from the board at this late point in the meeting? Anything?
I simply want to follow up on what John was talking about as far as the leadership team and equity partners in the schools, is that being enrolled in Facing Racism, I am grateful that all board members are also enrolled in that. So thank you for taking that initiative, and I look forward to the difference that makes on this board once we all go through, all seven of us go through. Upcoming meetings for your attention. The end of next week, 26th through 29th, is the MSBA Annials. Then followed, following that is October 1, 2019, is our study session. Our regular meeting will be two weeks later, on the 15th of October. And then we have a couple of events around the foundation, which is the 2019 Hall of Fame reception, which is the 16th of October at 5:30 PM over at the John and Jenny Morris Conservation Education Center over on West Sunshine, where Wolf is. And then 2019 Hall of Fame Luncheon, itay at noon, and I think everybody's already enrolled for that. That's also in the same location. The plus delta purpose statement is there for our use. Board officers love to get feedback on how the meeting goes. We do have an executive session tonight, and let me read the recommended action to that, because we need to vote to go into executive session. The recommended action is that the board meets in executive session to discuss legal, real estate, and personnel matters as provided in section 610.021, 123, and 13, the revised statutes in Missouri. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Lena. Is there a second?
Second.
Charles? Are we ready to vote? Let's vote. And while we vote, I will thank members of the audience for being here tonight. A special thank you to employee schools for starting off, getting the school year started. Thank you. We appreciate your work.